Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November meeting of Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. And to begin, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and if we care to, share something we are reading, listening to, or playing. Chris Hull, how about we start with you?
I am listening to Tom Lake by Ann Pratchett, and I have been trying to listen to this for quite some time, but it'll be easier on CD, so.
Yes.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading Nexus by Yuval Noah Harari, and our family is playing Farming Simulator 25 on the PS5.
I am Chris Harrison, and I am reading The Stolen Key by Margaret Peterson Haddix, and listening to A Strange Thing Happened in Cherry Hall by Jasmine Warga.
And I just remembered, it's a book that just came out. She was the author of Braiding Sweetgrass, and she has a new little tome out called Service Berries. It's delightful. Service Berries, yeah.
I'm Amy O'Shaughnessy, and I'm reading What We Sacrificed for Magic by Andrea Jo de Ward.
Just saying, here's the initial, the name tag says Nichelle in front of you. So just switch them. All right, so the first item on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda items from previous meetings, so the minutes from October 16th board meeting, the monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personnel report, and the board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Moving on. We'll turn to Greer for the director's monthly report.
Okay. We had yet another month of increased library card signups. That's 14 straight months, which is wonderful. We have raised the limit on our Blu-ray collection checkouts from two titles at a time to seven, and we've added video game controllers to our Library of Things collection, which is a welcome news for all our console gaming patrons, particularly those who fall victim to the rage quitting epidemic, which claims far too many video game controllers. CATS had a record-breaking production month, covering no fewer than 60 government meetings in October alone. CATS also continued its election coverage with candidates on demand and continued playback of local candidate forums on our CATS channels. There are some great Vital Learner quotes this month, as always, but it's also worth pointing out that we're averaging about eight new attendees at each of our monthly Vital Volunteer orientations. Few of us attended the annual conference of the Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services the week of October 14th. We're getting started on our new Bookmobile purchase plans, which we expect to complete by the end of 2026, and this conference was a great opportunity to see new Bookmobile vehicles, talk with vendors, and learn from other libraries who've recently purchased outreach vehicles, including Bookmobiles. Our Friends of the Library group hosted a successful Power of Words event on November 9th, featuring authors Ashley Hope Perez and Jacinda Townsend. The authors spoke to a large audience at the Buskirk-Chemley Theater about the power that stories can have to change the world. We then held a reception with the authors at the downtown library, where they signed books, greeted fans, and enjoyed some music and food. Thanks to our Friends Group and to our Power of Words Committee for organizing this biennial event, our next Power of Words event is slated for 2026. And finally, our downtown library security camera upgrade and installation project was completed last month. This brings our exterior security cameras at this flagship facility in line with our Elletsville and Southwest branch cameras, as both branches have had those newer cameras in place since the completion of their respective building projects. An important note I want to emphasize, these cameras have improved directional capabilities, higher resolution, and increased storage capacity, but none of these features alters in any way how we use our security camera footage, as that's governed by our policy. And happy to answer any questions.
I noticed that the featured e-library resource was The Shelf. What is The Shelf? I'm not familiar with that.
I honestly can't remember, but I'm pretty sure Lisa Champelli is here and can speak to that if she's willing to come up.
So The Shelf is an online platform that provides access to movies and television series in Spanish that are produced by Spanish-speaking countries specifically for native Spanish speakers. We added it as a way to try to make more content available in Spanish for native Spanish speakers. It has been slow to be used connecting with that audience, helping native Spanish speakers know that this content is available, even just in talking with the head of El Centro, just in helping some native Spanish speakers new to Bloomington know what the library is all about, and that we have materials that they can use and borrow for free. So we're continuing to look at ways to just help people learn what it is and the types of content that it has.
Is it mostly Hispanic Spanish, or is it Spain Spanish?
It has a fair amount of content that was produced in Mexico, and that's one of the things that the head of El Centro was helping us learn, is that, you know, if you have people from Venezuela, you know, they have different interests, are used to watching different television series than people moving from Mexico. So that's been part of, I think, the challenge to having it become understood and used, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Greer? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. So we have one action item. We have a, we need a motion to approve the 2025 Employee Benefits Renewal. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and then we have Mark Bryant here to explain a little bit about these employee benefits for 2025. Welcome, Mark.
Hi there. So can you do your man? All right, so I am, excuse me, I'm Mark Bryant. I'm the payroll and benefits coordinator. I served where you were for 16 years in Mitchell. I was a board member there. We have almost the same. We have 177 employees here. We had a total of nine. So we, you know, we have much the same budget and everything else, so. Anyway, the library provides a generous package of benefits for all of our employees. We just want to hit the highlights of some of those things tonight. Please feel free to stop me. I'll continue on. Unless there's no questions, I'll assume that everything is good to go. So first, we have our group life and volunteer life insurances. Monroe County Public Library provides group term life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance policy for all full-time employees. The policy benefit is two times the employee's annual salary with a maximum of $160,000. The premium is based on age and salary and is paid 100% by the library, and there was no premium change from 2024. If the employee desires to have more life insurance coverage, the library provides the opportunity for voluntary life and AD&amp;D with a maximum benefit of $500,000, and that again is through Guardian. $100,000 of it is based on a guarantee. If there's more, if they want more than that, then usually there is a evidence of insurability. The coverage includes spouses and dependents under age 26, and again, that's paid, the voluntary part is paid 100% by the employee. Next up is long-term and short-term disabilities. The library provides full-time employees with long-term disability insurance coverage. The long-term benefit, it has an elimination period of 90 days after a debilitating injury or illness. Hi there. And it is, the monthly benefit pays 60% of the employee's salary up to $5,000. The benefit will be, continues until the social security disability kicks in, or they reach their normal retirement age. The library also provides the opportunity for short-term disability insurance for all employees working 25 hours or more. The standard, or excuse me, the Short-Term Disability Plan has a 14-day elimination period and has a weekly benefit of 60%, of the employee's salary up to $1,000 per week. The library pays $150 of the annual premium, which provides most of our employees with free or really reduced short-term disability. Neither plan had any rate adjustments from 2024 to 2025. Next is the flexible spending account, or the dependent care flexible spending account. We, the library offers those to, those working 20 hours or more per week. The FSA allows an employee to contribute to, for a maximum of $2,500 per year to an account that covers medical expenses during that year. The dependent care account allows for an employee to contribute to an account to cover dependent care. Both accounts are pre-tax payroll deductions and are 100% paid by the employee. As many of you have heard, in 2024, Everside Clinic was purchased by Marathon Health LLC. All of the employees of the library and their immediate family members are eligible to visit any Marathon clinics in Bloomington, Bedford, and Martinsville. The library pays 100% of the premium, and they had a modest increase of 2.5% from 2024. The other benefits that the library has provides an employment assistance program. The EAP program provides library employees with a 24-hour access to a crisis helpline. They have online or in-person mental health counseling, along with other opportunities such as tax and legal advice and consulting. The library pays 100% of this cost through Guardian. MCL also provides subsidized parking and bus passes for employees based on their number of hours that they work per week, and the annual renewal occurs in August of each year. Finally, the big challenge is the health insurance. MCL provides health insurance to all full-time employees. In years past, the library has paid 100% for the employee-only premium and 80% for any of the spouse or dependent coverage. As Corey Johnson of J. Benefits presented in last month's meeting, Anthem originally presented a 15.56 premium increase, a percentage increase for the health insurance coverage. Those premiums were negotiated down to 8%, and the library receives a premium credit for $25,682, which will be used, which ultimately makes it to 5% increase, and the library will use those to offset any of the health insurance costs that we incur. We offer three different programs. We offer a traditional PPO, as well as two HSA plans through Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield. The first we'll review is the PPO plan, and you can see the breakdown of costing there. This plan has a deductible of $500, and currently the employee-only premium is being paid 100% with the employee spouse, employee children, and employee family premium is being an 80/20 split with the library. The high deductible plans we have, we have two of them. One, again, both plans, the employee establishes a health savings account through German American Bank for both the employee and library contributions. The first plan we'll review is a high deductible set at $3,300. This is increased from 2024 to meet IRS guidelines. Again, we, the library pays 100% of the employee-only premium, and they have an 80/20, we have an 80/20 split for anything above that. The major change for this, for this plan is the library's contribution portion. Our new employee, or excuse me, our new payroll provider, Paylocity, limited us to a number of employer contributions options. Therefore, we recommend that the board allow the library to pay $1,300 per year for employee only, and $2,340 for all of the remaining employee-plus programs. The other plan that we have is a high deductible $5,000 plan. The only difference here is that it goes from $3,300 to $5,000. We asked that the library, we recommended the library allow us to pay $1,950 per year for the employee plan, and $3,640 for the employee-plus plan. Last, we have dental and vision. The library provides the opportunity for dental and vision coverage to all, for employees and their families through HRI. The dental coverage allows participants to cleanings per year and pays 60% of any other dental fees up to $1,000 per year. The premium cost has a rate hold through 2025, and the premiums are, the premium cost is shared by both the employee and the library, depending on their family or their participation. And finally, just a little bit of good news, the vision coverage, that is totally employee-sponsored or employee-paid. They have an annual wellness visit, and there are allowances for frames and contact lenses as another eye care needs. There is a slight decrease, so there's a little bit of good news for the employee spouse premium. The employee spouse premium went from $155.64 to $154.92, saving the employee a total of 3 cents per paid period. So, you know, you can look at it as very small, but it's better than an increase. Are there any questions at all?
More for probably my stupidity. Do we have a lot of people who are not 20 hours or more, or less? I mean, what is, when he was sharing the different kinds of things, so are there a lot of people that are not up to the 20 hours?
That is correct. Well, we have 15 to 18 hour a week employees, whose only benefit is this, is the pilot sick leave benefit that we introduced in the middle of the year. And then after that, people are eligible for different types of benefits. I don't know what the breakdown of full-time versus part-time and hours is.
The number of 15 to 18 hours, I don't know. I would, do you have any idea? I would say around 15 to 20, but I'm not positive of that.
Do they qualify to go to the clinic?
They do, yes.
Would you characterize those 15 or under 20 hours as very young people, or no?
In a lot of cases, yeah. We've traditionally hired undergraduate students, some high school students, to do those jobs. But we also have some retirees who do it, and then just some folks who love doing that kind of work and have done it for many years.
Okay. You just want to get paid a little bit, yeah?
Yeah.
So on our most recent payroll, we had 25 employees who worked less than 20 hours a week, nine employees who worked 20 hours a week, 27 employees who worked 25 hours a week, and 97 who are full-time. And then we've got seven more that are full-time, six that are 25, and four that are 20. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Well, I commend the library for obviously putting thought into this and for covering 100% of the cost for employees. I think this library is well-regarded in the community as a wonderful place to be and to work, and to have that cost covered by the organization as a real asset to this place in terms of recruiting and retaining talent, so, yeah.
I would agree. It's a great draw for new employees and a great way to keep those good employees. Anyone else? If not, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All those in favor of approving the 2025 employee benefit renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next we'll move on to new business, and the first item is a memorandum of understanding between MCL and the Musical Family Tree. Do we have a motion to approve this MOU?
So moved. No, second.
Okay, and then we have Lisa, who's going to explain a little bit about the Musical Family Tree.
All right. Thank you for allowing me time to explain our interest in supporting Musical Family Tree and our work that led to this proposed memorandum of understanding. Now, when we think of libraries, many of us first think of books, the stories they hold, the authors who write them. But there are many different ways, of course, that we tell and share stories, novels, poetry, zines. We tell stories visually. As a people, we tell stories visually and through music. Musicians and lyricists are storytellers too, absolutely. And MCL collects all these different kinds of stories, but the ways that we collect them are evolving, along with our patrons' preference for how they access and enjoy these stories of all kinds. We are finding that books and music on CD format are not in demand as they once were. Does this mean that fewer people are listening to music or interested in discovering new musicians? Not at all. It's just that we have other options now for how we discover and enjoy music. Our selector of non-print media, Brandon Rome, has been noticing that the demand for checking out new releases, that new music that is released to CD format has been dropping, and as usage of this collection decreases, he also has been purchasing fewer titles in this format. In 2023, Brandon purchased 1,705 music CDs. In 2024, he's purchased less than half that amount. However, we are seeing steady increase, or steady usage of Freegal, which is our online platform for, that we subscribe to, that enables folks to download music as well as stream it. And you can find a whole wide variety of genres and titles on that platform. In the last couple of months, we have consistently seen an average of 10,000 streaming, 10,000 songs streamed in a month's time and 2,000 songs downloaded in a month's time. And the difference for that is that we only allow, part of our subscription agreement is that we allow five free downloads per month. So I'm sure there would likely be more than that if we allowed more. But not everything, of course, is on Freegal, as our collection development team has been anticipating the need to reduce the size of our music CD collection. We, you know, one of the questions that we started talking about was how do we continue to provide access to music that is created locally in Bloomington? We have a local author's collection. How can we help highlight local music? So we formed a committee earlier this year with representation from collection development, IT, and public services staff to look at different platforms that supported the ability of musicians to upload music files for sharing. Jared Thompson, our collection maintenance assistant, who has been supporting digitization initiatives, chaired this committee. Jared's here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge all the great work that he has done in leading this initiative, leading this investigation. He led our efforts with testing out the functionality of a platform called Biblioboard, which offers a couple different options for libraries seeking to provide access to digital collections. And there was a lot that we liked about Biblioboard, but as we were concluding our trial access with them, we learned that a nonprofit organization called Musical Family Tree was essentially rebooting some of its community engagement efforts and highlighting the wealth of local music that it started making available 20 years ago through its online archive. And that's, the website here is where you can find their online archive of music. And in taking a look at this platform, this archive, we realized that our vision for providing a way to access online music created by local artists was something that Musical Family Tree had already developed, and 20 years ago at that. Their archive, you know, lets you search, you know, by the name of a band. Have to watch me try to manipulate this. There we go. I'm not getting this to scroll. Anyway, I won't have you suffer watching me try to navigate on this, on the website here. I don't know why I can't get it to, get it to go up and down. But they, you can search by the name of the band. You can search by region. You can look for all of the things that are located in Bloomington. You can see the genres of different bands. But the name for this platform, Musical Family Tree, was intentional because one of the things they wanted to do was also try to show the affiliation of different musicians with different bands, to kind of show a network of how artists support each other and support the development of music, and particularly how it might spread from one area to another as musicians move from one location to another. So Jared contacted Jeb Banner, the founder of Musical Family Tree, to let him know our interest in the archive and to learn whether he had any plans to start accepting new submissions again. He was doing, you know, kind of rebooting this community engagement effort, but did that include opening up the archive and letting new music to be added? Jeb was open to that possibility, but explained that Musical Family Tree has been a labor of love, and the organization would require additional support if it were to start accepting new submissions. Jeb kindly came to Bloomington to meet with us and Greer, Josh Wolf, and Martin O'Neill, manager of Community Access Television Services, which also has an interest in making local music more accessible to our community. We felt that we could designate some MCL staff time to helping accept and upload new submissions to the archive, but Musical Family Tree first needed to make some upgrades to their web platform in order to re-enable the web form to support that submission process. And so that's where the MOU comes in. We are seeing a clear alignment with Musical Family Tree in a shared interest in supporting music creation and enjoyment, and we would like to help support some of the technical upgrades necessary to start accepting new music submissions. So the MOU outlines the types of technical enhancements to the MFT platform that MCL would like to support with a financial sponsorship, and we've designated a timeframe that we would expect for completing these upgrades. We're specifically seeking your approval for making a $5,000 contribution to MFT before the end of this year, with the expectation that a web form for accepting new submissions would be enabled by middle of January 2025. And in 2025, we would like to make a second contribution, especially to support the development of the ability to gain usage statistics of the platforms. That, being able to see that usage data is not something they currently have enabled. So with that summary, what questions do you have for us? And Jared has kindly offered to help answer questions.
No questions, but sorry it took all that time to find this on your part, that you spent a lot of time, but thank you for finding it.
Is this something that is relatively unique in this region in terms of, are there other states or other libraries outside of Indianapolis that have established this kind of service?
That's a good question. We have not discovered anything similar to MFT's not-for-profit kind of initiative. Yeah, we could try to, you know, do some more investigating into that. We did have a trial or did some investigating with another platform called Music Cat, and that one seemed to be especially popular in California. And they had a very, they had an interesting business model in that they were paying royalties to artists that contributed their music to the platform. And so- And so that just didn't seem sustainable for us. You know, really a lovely way to support and, and, you know, desire to support artists, but we just didn't see how we could make that work. And part of what Jeb has explained with Musical Family Tree, you know, as we were thinking about, well, you know, there's lots of places that people can post their music. They can post it to YouTube, they can post it to Spotify, Bandcamp. So, you know, what is, what is the goal? What is the purpose for Musical Family Tree? But that was started 20 years ago before many of these other options were available. And, and so, you know, Musical Family Tree is really helping to aid to the discoverability of, of the, of different musicians and artists. Yeah, and so by associating it with the library, I think we can do two things. We can help communicate the library and our Monroe County community's appreciation for how we value creation, you know, as, you know, part of our mission to read, learn, connect and create. So how do we help support those creative efforts? And how do we help recognize, or, you know, how do we help people in our community recognize that this is, this type of, of material, this type of content, this type of creation is something that we want to include in our library and help other people discover and enjoy?
So mainly it's a promo for individuals? It's not really something that, if you say you value the musical creativity and contributions, but yet you're not giving them royalties?
Right, right. Yeah, that's true. We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be paying, you know, artists individually in the same way that we don't pay authors who, I mean, we, you know, we buy books from publishers, but we're not the ones who are paying authors or royalties. So, so it can be a way to, you know, for an artist to, you know, perhaps add to, to their audience. A component of this that, that we're planning is to, Musical Family Tree also has a newsletter where they list where are places that you can go to hear musicians perform in your community. And that's part of the kind of ecosystem that supports musical creation. If you're making music and just playing it for yourself, I mean, that can be very gratifying, but, you know, it's to help other people kind of discover and enjoy your music as well.
I've got a couple of questions. First one being, then will we develop some type of policy about what we choose as a submission to be uploaded to that site? And secondly, will we create a record for them so that then we can see what we have put in? Will we have some type of library collection with records?
Right. So the development of a record is something that we've also asked Musical Family Tree to help support so that we could consider adding Mark Record to our catalog to enhance that discoverability piece. The, and we have talked about, you know, what types of parameters we would put around the types of content that we would accept for submission. And we haven't finalized that yet. You know, it's a, it's a cross between, you know, wanting to be open, kind of, you know, what kind of expectations do we set for the, the types of things that we'll accept? And how do we also, you know, communicate that to potential listeners to know that just how curated is this, you know? And I, I think at this time, we're kind of leaning toward being, you know, more open to, you know, the types of content, to, to a range of content. We've talked with Jeb about the possibility of if someone makes a music file in our digital creativity studio, is that something that we can, we could consider uploading to this platform so that, so that other people could learn that this is something you can do at the library? And, you know, we've thought that that could be something that, that we support, but that we might tag it in a certain way, essentially give it a subject tracing that, you know, helps people see this may not be a, you know, fully formed edited sound file. It's a, you know, a practice opportunity for somebody. So that is something that we're, that we're considering. But certainly also outlining, you know, for artists that contribute their music so that they know that they retain all of the copyright associations with that music, that if something's featured on Musical Family Tree, they can still go ahead and submit it to Spotify or, you know, wherever else they may be interested in having it live.
Does Musical Family Tree have specifications on what they allow? I mean, does that kind of tailor what would be? Because otherwise I was thinking genres. Do we say, you know, these are children, this is, you know, that type of thing as well?
Yeah. I don't know that we got a specific answer from Jeb about the type of guidelines they may have had in place when they were accepting submissions. They started with a lot of music that they were aware of. You know, Jeb is a musician, participated in some bands, so he was, you know, connecting with his network essentially to upload some of the music that was only on cassette tape at the time and trying to figure out how do I, how do I preserve this music? How do I share it with other people? So, yeah, so another good, good questions.
Two questions. What's the marketing and communication strategy around this? Like, how will people know this exists?
Yeah. We have just had a beginning conversation with our marketing manager to help Tori learn that this is something that we want to do. But we have asked in the MOU that we include, that they include MCPL's logo somewhere on their platform, that, that we would also want to link, you know, to this platform from our website. We would be, you know, potentially in our newsletter, including mention of Musical Family Tree if, you know, we get to the point of helping to gather information about where local bands are performing in town. You know, we would help submit that to their, to, to Musical Family Tree's newsletter. But, but outlining a more detailed and comprehensive marketing and promotion plan is something that we would do in conjunction with Tori.
Okay, wonderful. Two more questions.
And I think you explained this, but I missed it. So is Musical Family Tree doing like an archaeological dig or like some sort of historical analysis of the bands that have existed here and reaching out to them to get their content on the platform? Or is this all driven by self-submissions?
When Musical Family Tree was accepting submissions, it was all, it was, from my, my understanding is that it was mostly artist, you know, self-submitted with, you know, Jeb Banner, the founder, kind of reaching out to some bands that he knew of and was connected with. But that, in, that we are thinking would be part of our kind of promotion if we, you know, to help, you know, current musicians locally learn about Musical Family Tree and that we would try to do some inviting, you know, of, of submissions. Yeah. But, but as far, yeah, but as far as going back and doing who is performing in, you know, the early 2000s that may not be represented, that, you know, we could consider doing something like that as well.
That's what my mind went to when you said Family Tree. Now I'm thinking genealogy, like what has existed here? But I'm also thinking about if we're investing $10,000 into this partnership, what does success look like? Will we need to see 100, 1,000, 1,500 self-submissions? Or do we need to see the Music Family Tree team curate five different family lineages based on bands? Like, how, how we know that it was worth investing in?
Right. That's an excellent question. And it's something that we wrestle with a lot with our subscription resources as well. You know, what counts as something, you know, how much usage means that it's something we should keep or continue with? And how, we were just talking about that today with the selectors, you know, what, what do we need to have in the library because we are a library and it's kind of expected? And what really, you know, what do we need to keep or make sure that we have because that's what our community is indicating they want us to have? So I don't have a good, don't have a good answer to that right now, but, but we were seeing MCPL staff helping to support some of the invitations to musicians in our community to learn, you know, that they, that they could, that we would like to have their music included in the library's collection. And, you know, there may be some folks that are like, um, sorry, you know, that's okay, I'm not interested. But we, we know there's some musicians that we have on staff who we don't see here, partly because the submission process, you know, closed when Musical Family Tree was managing it, you know, closed in 2010. So, so there is a lot of representation that's not, not currently on here. Yeah.
Could be a good community partnership. Like if we are thinking about Heritage Month or even the City of Bloomington's Black and Brown Arts Festival, right? Like how do we encourage not only new submissions, but the historical exploration of who in the community has done this?
Right.
And how do we actually start to build the family tree? I'm most excited about the family tree piece of it. I'm not entirely seeing how, if we just have a bunch of self-submissions, how that is going to curate the family tree. I see how it curates the catalog, but I don't see it, how it tells the story of who's connected.
Right, yes. And that reminds me that Katz does have a collection of music videos and I think some music files. So we were talking with Jeb about the possibility of separating the video from the sound file. And, you know, again, you know, trying to, you know, make sure that the artists represented are okay with that. But because the platform, having video content would be too much bandwidth essentially, we were looking at ways that we could separate out some of the sound files from those recordings in order to include them.
Wonderful. Can you come back and tell us the, the progress on this?
I would love to.
Six months in, maybe?
I would love to.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
I had a couple of questions. Some of them were related. So if somebody, it's kind of related to this family tree, I don't know the best way to ask this. Essentially, Musical Family Tree works with the artist, the creator of the music to, to, they have some kind of like standard process by which the files are uploaded and the artist says, hey, I retain the rights to this music, X, Y and Z, for performances that Katz recorded at Lotus Festival or other, you know, like, I work in fundraising, so we have people who are like, I have an immense record collection, I would love to donate it. So do the rights to have the music on Musical Family Tree lie with the creators generally?
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent question. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, Lotus and, you know, the wealth of, of music, you know, that, that Lotus Festival represents and provides. And that would, that event would not be something that we would consider for Musical Family Tree because while there's a lot of local artists that do perform at Lotus, you know, Lotus planners work out all of those kind of licensing and performance agreements with all of the artists that they're bringing in. So, so that kind of event, you know, is not likely to be represented. But it is one of, you know, the, the benefits to having that be the self-submission by the artist is that, you know, they, they retain the rights, they know, you know, if they're wanting to add something that is, you know, maybe already included on a published album, that, that they're in communication with their, you know, publisher about that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then there's not a login required, right, for Musical Family Tree?
Correct.
So is there any, I was just trying to think if this is in any way similar to Libby or other like digital resources that a patron would use through the library? Is there anything that I wouldn't be thinking of that? Because I, as a citizen, can just go to the website and stream or download any of those? So is there a tangible? I think there are other benefits that you've listed out, but are there other, like, is there a, a patron sort of access?
Right.
To this website that is gained through this partnership? Or is it more through the promotion that the library is doing and saying, hey, you know, this is a way to tell stories. You might not be aware that you could listen to these, that this resource is available to you?
Yeah. It is currently, you know, Musical Family Tree is live on the web, currently open to anybody who discovers it, and anybody can go and listen to the music. So, so there's no, you know, no patron, MCPL patron membership benefit. So it, it is just our association with it, helping it to become discoverable and, and hopefully used more.
Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
You might not, I promise I'm gonna stop asking this question. You might not be able to answer this, but how are they making money if their type of partners like the library are not paying for this partnership?
Yeah. Yeah, they are, you know, currently not-for-profit, had been, I think, supported in part by some business associations.
Okay.
But, but that's part of, you know, of their challenge right now is how does, you know, how does any not-for-profit organization stay afloat? And, you know, so, so our contribution is not meant to be able to sustain, you know, an entire not-for-profit organization. And, and we did ask in the MOU that if there was, if there were songs or material that we helped to upload, and for some reason Musical Family Tree finds that they just can't support this platform anymore, we asked to be able to take, you know, that material that we helped to contribute and consider moving it to another platform if we, if we wanted to go that route.
Wonderful. Exciting. Thanks.
Thank you for your time and questions. And thank you to Jared for all your help in investigating this.
So all those in favor of approving the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding between MCPL and the Musical Family Tree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Next, we were notified that the Katz contracts have come through a little early, so we are moving that from our December meeting to tonight. So do we have a motion to approve the Katz contracts for 2025?
Second.
Okay, and then Martin O'Neill is going to explain those contracts to us.
Yeah, you have three contracts before you. One from the City of Bloomington, Monroe County and the town of Elletsville. The city contract was sent to us by the city. The numbers there are all accurate. It was a 1% increase on the city contract. The county contract you have was a contract that we put together that was based on last year's contract. We don't anticipate any difference in the contact, contract itself. The numbers there, we've had verbal confirmation, also they should be good, but there's always a possibility that could come back in December if we find out there's any small changes or anything in the contract itself. And the contract with the town of Elletsville is pretty much the same. It's based on last year's contract. We don't expect any changes to the contract itself. It has a 2% increase, increases from this year. And so if there are any changes there, we can come back again in December and clear, clear all that up. And any questions?
Any questions? All those in favor of approving the contracts between MCPL and, I'm sorry, between Katz, Katz and the, was it the? City of, so City of Elletsville?
The town of Elletsville, City of Bloomington and Monroe, Monroe County.
I'm sorry, what was the last one?
Monroe.
Okay. So the City of Bloomington, City of Elletsville and Monroe County signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have come to the point of the meeting for our department update. We have an update tonight from Outreach Services and Vital. Are we speaking, hearing from Chris Jackson first? All right. So Chris Jackson's gonna give us some updates on Outreach Services.
Hello, my name is Chris Jackson, I am the Outreach Services Manager, and it's always a pleasure to give you an update on what we've been doing for the last year. So Outreach as a department has a mission of mitigating whatever barriers county residents might experience in trying to access library services. Now that we have three branches, we have a pretty good library coverage in terms of buildings, but that doesn't mean everyone in the county can access what we offer. In some cases, barriers might be geographical, sometimes they might be mobility, sometimes they might be socioeconomic factors, sometimes they might be literacy factors, all sorts of reasons can make the buildings not so accessible and not so approachable by some members of our community, and we're here to help try to remediate that. So we do that with six distinct service points, list them and then go into a little more detail on most of them. We have a bookmobile service, we have a van service, we have a service we call Call House Calls, we have preschool services, we have a jail service, and finally, we have an adult literacy, literacy service. The latter is volunteers and tutoring adult learners, and Bethany will be giving a separate presentation on that since she is the vital coordinator and also the assistant manager of the department. So we staff these service points with 10 staff members, including myself and Bethany, all of whom are part-time, save one part-time person, two librarians, and six library associates in addition to Bethany and myself. So I'll go into a little more detail on those first five service points. Bookmobile is probably the most recognized among them in that we've been doing it for a long time, we're coming up on our centennial celebration in just four more years. It started in 1929, and yes, we are planning a big year-long party to celebrate Bookmobile with a new bookmobile that Greer mentioned, hopefully beyond its, its proving period and doing fabulous service with some new amenities around the county. Bookmobile visits 30 locations on a weekly schedule, we go out every day of the week except for Friday, which we reserve for maintenance, and our stops fall into four basic categories. We try to go to those rural or distant, remote communities that are not Elletsville or Bloomington, so towns like Unionville and Steinsville, Stanford, Harrodsburg, places like that, that are geographically distant from our branches. We also go to a significant number of low-income communities wherever they're located in the county, both the city housing, city housing at Walnut Woods and Crestmont, and then quite a, a large number of other lower-income apartment complexes throughout the county. We have some senior living and assisted living locations on Bookmobile service, although most of those have transitioned to van that I'll get to later. And then finally, we have a couple of stops that I call convenience stops. One at the Fifth Third Bank in front of the Target out by College Mall on Sundays, and one at the Southeast Y on Saturdays. Those are locations, as you may know, we've had some concerns about the amount of parking here downtown, and the new branch obviously helps address that. But we have a significant number of users who just want a, a quick way to pick up their holds, do some browsing, not have to hunt for a, a library parking spot, and those are two of our actually heavily, most heavily used stops. And many of those patrons do come to the branches on occasion, but a branch visit, especially for a family with multiple ages, is sometimes a, a bigger deal than you can work in on a busy weeknight or a busy weekend, so a quick Bookmobile stop serves some of those families quite well. Let's see, also on Bookmobile, we have about 3,000 items that we keep on the truck at any given time, well, 3,000 items shelved on the truck and about another 3,000 checked out. It's a very small collection compared to any branch library I've been to, but we try to keep it really dynamic by changing that collection constantly. We're rotating in new materials from this downtown building almost daily, and then after five to six months, they rotate off so that the whole collection is flipping constantly with almost all the staff who work on the Bookmobile active in that curation and rotation of materials. So even though it is a small collection, a lot of people like the experience of coming on, looking at maybe a relatively small number of large print mysteries, but finding new ones that we've picked based on what we know is popular, what they've told us they want, and what we feel they think they would want if only they knew about it. So that's one of the fun aspects of the job, is curating and anticipating and responding to patron needs, and I think we do that exceptionally well. Most outreach collections are much more static than what we do. This is labor-intensive, but it really has a big payoff in terms of the satisfaction of the browsing experience. So we circulate about 75,000 to 80,000 materials annually on the Bookmobile. That number's down a little bit from pre-pandemic levels as a lot of circulation is, but it does keep creeping up as newer families start to discover us and other people come back and find us. Promoting it is something we're constantly working on, and we have some new ideas I need to talk to Tori about, about some additional Bookmobile promotions. As Greer mentioned, this vehicle is kind, it's, it's 15 years old at this point, and it was expected to live about 15 years. It's now declining more rapidly than we would wish, we're having some significant HVAC issues that no one seems to know how to solve, so working on that new Bookmobile is getting even more emphasis now. It will take a while, some of the major vendors do have an 18 to 24-month period between signing a contract and delivering a vehicle. Unfortunately, there's no such thing as a Bookmobile dealer with almost-ready-to-go vehicles sitting on a lot. At this size vehicle, they're all custom-made and custom-designed, so it is somewhat of a long process, but the end result is we get something that meets our needs as perfectly as we can afford. Affordability is absolutely an issue, but we do have the opportunity now to look at more electric and hybrid options to see if they will fit into our budget. So we're very excited about starting on that, and we'll have regular updates as that process proceeds. We have our first formal meeting, first week, or second week of November, of December, so, so things should start moving pretty quickly after that until we pick our chosen vendor. Then once we sign the contract, things slow down on our end, but we'll get regular updates and hopefully be able to visit the vehicle while it's being built, depending on how far it is. Some of the major vendors are not too far away, so if it's one of them, that'll make it easier for us to keep tabs on that process. So our other vehicle service is what we call our van service. We started this in 2004 in response to the fact that we were visiting senior locations with the Bookmobile, but a number of those, a significant number of those residents were not able to come on to the vehicle because of mobility limitations. It's a UPS step van sort of vehicle, and it does have some steps, and we have stepstools, but you do need to climb the stairs to come in, and that is a, a significant and sometimes complete barrier to access for some members of the community. So the van is a much smaller vehicle, and unlike the Bookmobile where patrons come, come on to browse the collection, the collection comes off to serve residents in assisted care and senior living facilities. We currently visit eight, I'm sorry, 11 such facilities in the county on an every-other-week basis, mostly for half-hour stops where we set up and we're on their activities calendar. People browse the collection, but also pick up specific titles that they requested on our previous visit, and it's a, a quick meeting of all the book lovers in a certain facility where they share, you've got to read this book, or don't waste your time with this one. We love it because we actually get readers advisory, we're all dedicated readers ourselves, so we're not only sharing what we love, but hearing what they love, and I get all my best readers advisory from, from my, my Bookmobile and van patrons, so real payoff there as well. Circulation there is ticking up, we do have some capacity to add additional stops on to the schedule, so we will be looking at new locations with all the housing developments that are coming, many of them are talking about senior-specific housing, and for those individuals, we really want to be able to serve them with either the Bookmobile or van to the extent that we possibly can. An additional kind of related service is what we call House Calls, it used to be called Homebound Service, but that had some negative connotations. So House Calls is a service for anyone who lives in Monroe County who can't use either the branches or the two outreach vehicles, they may be individuals who live in a facility that's not served by the van, or they may be aging in place at home, which we absolutely want to encourage, but they no longer are, are driving or have significant help to have somebody bring them to a library location. So for those individuals, we will do a personalized delivery to their home, wherever they are in Monroe County. That's a monthly service that we do on Fridays, we currently have about 80 people on that service, we've divided them into four routes, so we visit about one-fourth of that group every Friday to drop off materials and sometimes socialize a little bit, a lot of these individuals are very isolated, and the social contact is something that they appreciate and we appreciate as well. We are often serving people towards the end of their lives, so we constantly have people no longer on the service, and actually, our numbers are down slightly now than they were before. So best way for us to promote this service is always word of mouth, so for everyone here and anyone who may be watching on Katz, if you know anyone who would benefit from library services but isn't able to get to our branches, please do contact us, there is no charge for anything that we do, we try to make it as easy as possible. Too often, we hear people say, oh, I don't merit the library coming to visit me in my home, I'm not, I, that's just not something they should have to do. Well, we want to do it, and we're set up to do it, and we need to make sure that people are taking advantage of services that, that they are paying for as taxpayers.
Do you have flyers?
What's that?
Do you have flyers?
Absolutely. At, at all of the kiosks in the library, you'll see a House Calls flyer, it's actually a two-piece flyer with information about the service, and then a tear-off that is a, an application where you give your details and what sort of materials you want. So anybody who wants them, a, a couple can grab them from the kiosks, if you have a place that could use more, let me or Tori or anyone else know, and we'd be happy to drop them off wherever.
Because I do Meals on Wheels.
Oh, excellent.
A lot of those people might be.
We have often partnered with both Meals on Wheels and the Area 10 Food Delivery Program to help get the word out, and we've also delivered flyers for them to the cert, to the people who are on our service. So that kind of partnership is, is really key for us. So thank you, we'd love to have you get some of those out. Additional services that we have include a Head Start daycare service. So among our two librarians, one of them is a early literacy librarian, and she visits all of the Head Start locations in the county, and there are currently about 26, and does a monthly storytime at each of those locations, as well as dropping off a bag of early literacy books, picture books, but also sometimes CDs for, for dancing and movement, sometimes there's educational DVDs, but mostly early literacy print materials. And doing a storytime is not also benef, is not only beneficial for the kids who are there, but it's also allowing her to, to show best practices in early literacy with the teachers and at Head Start locations, parents are also required to spend time in the classroom, so modeling best practices on how to get young minds interested in books and reading and learning. So that's what we offer for Head Starts. For the larger daycares in the county, we can't do a monthly storytime, but we occasionally do one, one-off storytimes, and we do do the monthly delivery of library materials to the larger licensed childcare centers in the county. Early literacy is so incredibly important, and access to high-quality print materials is often prohibitively expensive, both for, for daycares and for families, so getting those materials directly to the, the teachers working with those kids really does enhance early literacy in our, in our surroundings, so we're very glad to be able to do that. One thing I forgot to mention on the van service, because I was talking about programming the storytimes, we also do programs at the senior facilities, we list, we visit with the van. Our other librarian who does a wide range of, of activities, she'll visit most of the places we go to the van on a periodic basis to do book group discussions, also craft programs, whatever sort of library-related activity may be of interest to their residents, she's out there doing that two to three days a week in addition to her other responsibilities.
Are the nursing homes or the facilities listed on the web?
So actually, unlike Bookmobile stops, they are not, because while all of our Bookmobile stops are open to everyone in the community, if you're in the community and eligible for a library card, we welcome you to come to the Bookmobile. The, the van is different in that it's only serving the residents and staff of a particular facility. Some of these facilities have memory care units where they have security concerns, so their doors are kept locked. All of them have some degree of security concerns, so we don't want to post them on the web with the anticipation that, that members of the public could come, the way they could come to a Bookmobile stop. We actually do list the, the sites, but not the specific times. We instead promote them through the activities directors to the, to the residents more directly rather than, than publicly. There's always some confusion between Bookmobile and van, and we're trying to make sure that, that Bookmobile patrons don't show up at, at van stops.
I may need to speak to you about one of the.
Oh, great, great, yeah. We did add a one, or actually, two in the past year, and we have some that are underperforming a little bit, so we're always looking at ways to get the maximum bang for our buck with the van and always open to considering additional facilities, so. One last place I wanted to mention, one last service point, is our jail service. So we have a partnership with the Monroe County Correctional Center whereby they give us $8,000 a year to spend on their behalf, so we spend that money building and maintaining the collection at the library at the jail. And then in addition, we have our staff there three days a week doing circulation and readers advisory at the jail. As you might imagine, this is an extremely popular service for inmates at the jail, having quality literature to read, helps that experience be a lot less negative than it's going to be. It's also very popular with the jail staff and administration because giving the incarcerated a quiet way to spend their time prevents a lot of the issues that they regularly experience in a facility where there's a lot of crowding, sometimes some mental health issues, a lot of frustration, quiet reading is something that most people who are there really, really look forward to. It is a very successful partnership, we did have a little bit of, of what we feel is a setback in recent months where there, we used to be able to circulate five items to each inmate during each visit, and we were checking out softback as, paperback as well as hardback books. They have some concerns, and they're certainly legitimate about hardbacks and even, even paperbacks being like put into a laundry bag and being used as a weapon. It's a relatively new jail commander over there, and it wasn't something that he was looking at immediately, but he did let us know that that was a, a major concern of his. So we had to scale back circulation to three titles per time and no hardback books currently, but we do want to continue to work with them and try to, try to get back to circulating more materials. And as you may know, a new jail is being planned for the county, we have communicated what we feel would be, certainly, a lot would be better than what we currently have. If you haven't been inside the current Correctional Center, it has a lot of issues, both structural in terms of capacity, in terms of just being a very old building. The space we have is much too small for the amount of use it gets, so we have sent a, a design for a space that has more room, better sightlines, and we think would provide a, a more efficient way for us to meet the, the literature needs of that population. And once planning gets further along, we do hope to be talking to the architects about how to optimize it. We're also hoping for a little space where we can do some of our backwork while we're over there. Sometimes there's slow periods where we don't have anything to do, and having a little bit of office space would allow us to be more productive while we're over there, especially since we'll no longer be able to walk to the facility, we want to make sure that when we drive over there, our time is being used productively. So that is most of outreach in a nutshell. Again, there's the vital components still to come, but any questions about what we do in the department, anything you'd like to know more about or that I didn't address?
Quite a lot. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I will say it's a lot of fun. I haven't mentioned many of the staff by name, but I am very fortunate, and Bethany would say the same, to have a very dedicated, amazing staff that makes all these service points happen. It's not always the easiest in terms of environmental and ergonomic factors, working on the vehicles and at the jail, but we're more than happy to put up with those somewhat less-than-ideal situations because of the feedback we get from the patrons we serve. We know we make a significant quality-of-life difference in many of our patrons' lives, which happens elsewhere in the library as well, but we have personal connections from getting to know our folks in a way that's hard to do in larger spaces, and there's tremendous gratification on the part of the staff from being able to, to connect and improve the lives of a, a number of the residents in the county. So thank you for supporting the work we do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Congratulations, incredible public service, it's wonderful to hear all these details. I did want to ask about the, the changes that you had to the jail library, does the reduction in, or the, the change in the, reduction of the number of titles and the scaling back from hardback, is a significant portion of the collection there, hardback, such that it really restricts the number of titles that somebody could get? And also, how often are inmates able to come to check out books such that a change from three to five, or five to three books makes a difference in what they're able to read during a given time period?
Yeah, really good questions. The hardback collection was probably 30 to 40% of what was over there, so a very significant amount. Now, we do get a new $8,000 budget every year, and we'll be able to, over the course of the next two years, fill those gaps. I will say, we also get a lot of books from the Friends of the Library. I will say, we also get a lot of books from the Friends of the Library bookstore. There's a lot of books that come off the bestseller list, and so many, a new Patterson or a new Grisham, they're not able to sell 20 copies of, so we get a lot of those titles. Now, unfortunately, many of those are hardback, but we are able to get paperbacks to supplement as well. Each inmate on a good month of service will get to the library approximately twice. It's highly dependent on what else is going on over there, and with the deteriorating building, often there are, you know, sometimes there are pipe leaks, sometimes they're needing to renovate a certain area and temporarily house inmates where we do the service, so it can be slowed down, and some months, we have multiple cancellations. But twice every other week is what we shoot for. With our circulation stats, we encourage inmates to share the books among themselves because they are only going to be able to make a visit every couple of weeks at best. So for each book we track as a circulation, it may be read two, three, or four times, and I'm sure that that happens more now. But there is a downward impact in terms of the quantity of materials that people can access. And we do, we've had multiple conversations and communication with the jail staff. We're hoping that after a time period, we'll be able to go back towards the previous limit of five. The hardback book issue, most jail libraries don't circulate hardbacks. It was never an issue previously, but I think, I don't know the specifics, but I think there was one incident that did lead them to have valid concerns about misuse of the materials. And in fact, many of the hardbacks, we check out a lot of encyclo, old encyclopedias there, and we know that they're used as weightlifting material because it's what's available.
Right.
A legitimate use of library material? I don't know, maybe, but not what we had in mind when we took them over there. I am hoping with a new facility, with better maintenance, better security, that we'll be able to expand the service and the frequency of service, but we'll see.
Thank you. Chris, as always, thank you for the enthusiasm and passion that you bring to outreach services. I can tell in your voice and through your speech that you really love what you do, and I'm sure that carries through to your staff and the people that you encounter on these visits, so thank you.
It's literally our pleasure, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next, we'll hear from Bethany about Vital.
Thanks for having me. I'm Bethany Ternstein, the Vital Coordinator. We were actually just in this space last week at the annual library celebration for volunteers, so this feels like a great opportunity to continue to celebrate the great work that we get to do at volunteers and tutoring adult learners. So we currently have 70 active Vital volunteers. Our volunteers' primary roles are providing one-on-one tutoring and small-group instruction for adults who want to improve their reading, writing, and English language skills. So Vital staff work to conduct initial assessments of each learner's skills. We facilitate communication and scheduling with a volunteer, and then we provide ongoing support for lesson planning, teaching techniques, and resources. Vital programs also provide important opportunities for social connections among people who might otherwise be isolated. So just this morning, I met with a tutor and a learner, helping them to figure out what sorts of materials they might need from the Vital collection. And the learner, she's a young woman who came from Syria. She initially fled the country at the age of eight, 19-years-old. After she left, she spent eight years in Lebanon and another three years in Egypt before finally resettling in the United States last year after a long journey. She's now the mother of four children, and so when she's not helping them with their schoolwork, she's working on improving her own skills. So before she left Syria, she completed nine years of schooling, and her current goal is to get her GED. And after we finished our meeting and looked at our resources together, she told me that continuing her education had always felt like a dream, and now it felt like a reality. So we are so grateful for the support that allows us to be able to support these stories. So far this year, Vital has had 282 learners participate. That represents 44 different countries, and the most common countries of origin include Venezuela, South Korea, Turkey, Colombia, and China. That 30% increase is actually, yeah, that number is a 30% increase from where we were last year, and we are feeling it. It's been a busy year, a great year. And reflecting on some of the reasons that might have caused that increase, we are kind of fully in this post-pandemic world where travel restrictions are lifted, people are traveling more safely, they're encouraged to travel, we're seeing more visiting scholars, people are coming to study at the university, and they bring with them spouses and families who are trying to integrate into the community. The flip side of that story is that we are also globally facing a refugee crisis. We know that 1.5 of the total world's population has been forcibly displaced, so that's about 117 million individuals worldwide. And locally, we've seen about 400 of those settle here in Bloomington over the last two years, and more certainly still to come. The library as a whole is a very valued partner as part of this resettlement process. So we offer space for cultural orientations, access, of course, to computers, internet, and library resources, and educational opportunities for English language learners. So our volunteers and community partners are essential to this work, but I would also like to take a moment to talk a little bit about the Vital staff, who are small but mighty and really have made some incredible contributions. So Mick Breeze is the Vital Associate, who's been with us for two years now. Their major project this year was spearheading the implementation of our new data system. It's a Salesforce product called Literacy Nimbus, and this data system is really the engine that runs everything that we do, from who we communicate with, how we communicate, our attendance, reporting, our waitlist, and Mick really took a lead role in every step of this process, from meeting with the vendors, evaluating the databases, the transition of the data, and really creating for us a customized infrastructure that allows us to do the work that we need to do seamlessly and handle these increases in populations. So we are so excited to have a new system that is also kind of future-proof, that can kind of grow with us as we continue to see these increased populations. So grateful for Mick's very specific knowledge and skillset that allowed that process to move forward. Our other staff is Kyla Worgel, so she's newer to the role. She joined Vital in February of this year, but she'd worked in the library other departments previously. And Kyla really hit the ground running. One of her strengths is to look at the big picture, identify the biggest area of challenge, and then start creating solutions. And for us, that big area of need is language support for very beginning English language learners, so those who have little-to-no previous experience with English. That population can be very difficult for a volunteer to support if you've never taught English before, if you don't have any teaching experience. It can also be really difficult in one-on-one tutoring to give the student the number of repetitions they need to really build those foundations of letters and numbers and vocabulary to be able to increase their skills. So Kyla took on the challenge, and she is now offering twice a week, a Level Zero Early Literacy Beginning English Language Group. I think of her as like the Pied Piper of Vital English. Her attendance is great, the students really respond well. She does, is fluent in Spanish, so she's able to communicate with our Spanish speakers and welcome them to class in a way that is comfortable in their native language. So that has really allowed us to kind of bridge the gap for students who may otherwise be on the waitlist for a very, very long time. We're also hoping that we can welcome new volunteers to attend and to shadow those classes and to kind of build up their own skills and confidence to be able to teach beginner learners more effectively. So it has been a busy year. We tend to kind of wind down our new volunteer orientations this time of year because people are busy doing other things, but in January, we'll resume our monthly orientations. Learners are always welcome, tutors are always needed, so if you could help us spread the word, we're always looking for more folks to join in, and I welcome any questions that you have.
Not a question, but you ever partner with IU with the language department over there so that they could, maybe that would be one of their, or part of their grade is to volunteer?
We've actually, we have kind of a rotating group of partnerships over there. One of them is they have practicum students who will offer short-term, this last year, a wildly popular one was they offered pronunciation support. We're students who were learning how to teach pronunciation, we're paired with Vital learners. That program quickly filled, so we would welcome more of those sorts of partnerships. But yeah, those opportunities are absolutely taking place. Yeah, thank you. Questions?
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much, Bethany.
Appreciate again all that you do to help the folks that are in need of your services.
I have no idea when library staff sleep.
Said that two months ago.
And I think I said annually, like, I'm just like, when do you all rest? This is amazing, yeah.
Next, we've reached the point of our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Just a quick reminder to the board members that our meeting next month is a week earlier because of the winter holidays, so it is December 11th, not the 18th, so just make sure you're here on the right night. Okay. So all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And then, board members, if you will, join us upstairs in the boardroom for our executive meeting, please.